I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:30. And are there any adjustments to the agenda? I have one, and that is, in sort of credit to all of you who have come out tonight, we're going to move the agenda item, which is the discussion of the art position up to right after the review and approval of the board minutes from last time. So, any other adjustments to the agenda? No? Okay, great. Then let's go over the minutes from the March 20 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I have none.
None?
Yeah.
Elise?
No.
Okay. Motion to approve as presented?
I make a motion to approve as presented.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you, Josh. I am grateful that so many people are here. And it takes an empowered and community, and a community that feels like it has voice to make a healthy community and healthy schools. And same with a school staff. It takes a school where the staff feels like they are empowered and can voice their concerns, and that also makes for a healthy school. So, I recognize that many people are here to voice concerns about the actions of this school board last meeting regarding the art position. Are there any other public comments on another subject that anyone has here? No? Okay. Then what I'm going to do is take up this, what was A.A., discussion of a .8 art position for 2018-19 first. And I think first we need a motion to reconsider our teacher roster from last meeting so that we can have a meaningful discussion about this. Is that correct?
Motion to rescind?
Rescind, rescind.
Okay. And then you vote on that motion. You have discussion about most rescind. They all, it was unanimous vote, so anyone can make that motion.
Make that motion.
You debate rescission.
Mm-hmm.
Have that vote, and then you're...
Okay.
Then you can reconsider.
So, and...
Because it is the teacher roster that was the action, did the motion. So you need to come out tonight with a teacher roster.
Right.
However that looks, you need to have one.
Right. So, I think what I'd like to do is have the board, soon it decides to do this, someone who wants to make a motion to rescind the teacher roster that we approved last meeting. Then, I'd like to allow you all to speak, whoever cares to. There are a lot of people here, and I hope you can keep your comments short, and keep in mind that many of you have written letters to the school board, and we've taken them to heart, and we don't need to have them read aloud to us again, but a brief summary or something, if you care to do that, would be great. And then we'll have a discussion about where to go from here. So, is there a motion, Cheryl?
Yeah, I move that the board rescind the approval of the teacher roster that was approved on March 20th.
Okay. Any discussion?
I guess, I'm just wondering, what's the discussion here? Are we talking about whether or not we like art and want an art position? Are we talking about, given a single position, a .8 position, what's the best use of that money? And if that's what we're talking about, I feel like we need the administration maybe to speak first to it? Because I think most people here, I'm guessing, are going to say, "We really value art," as I think, for myself, and I think I speak for everyone on the board, "We value." But I don't think that's the question, whether we value art. I think it's the question of, what do we do with this one position?
Correct, but in order to refashion that, and allocate, and feel free to allocate the resources as we want to do, or as, maybe we'll have some, a variety of different choices. In order to do that, we sort of need to open up our palette, open up the plate which we can work. Last meeting, we approved, instead of approving an art teacher, a .8 art teacher, we approved a .8 elementary school teacher. So, this will allow us to mix and match a little bit.
I mean, I guess, speaking to, I presume the audience speaking, I'm most interested in hearing creative ideas for how to use that position, and not merely explanation of why we value arts, which I think we all get. I mean, we definitely all value the arts. It's trying to meet multiple goals with limited funds that we feel like we're capped.
Any further discussion on Cheryl's motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. So now, I would like to, if anyone has public comments, they would like to share brief ones, please feel free. Yes, back there.
First of all, for starters, does everybody attended the meeting? I'm personally here because I heard if I would or not online. And so if you could just enlighten us as to what is actually going on versus some of the rumors that may be going on online, and that to hear personally as to the rescinding of the roster was to smile, and as to your reasoning as to why you're doing it before we even commence, would be good.
Well, I could sort of...
Should we have Doug speak to the presentation he gave to us, and then that's a starting point?
Sure. So, last, the last time that we met, the question was raised as to, we have this .8 art position that will, up until last week, was going to need to be advertised, and we were going to need to hire, and that when we were approving the teacher roster, Chris and I had had a conversation, you know, what is the best use of that .8? We already have 1 .8 art teachers on our roster. Most of that art time is dedicated to Studio Y and the program there, which you can see in the notes, is not traditional art or art in that particular respect. So the conversation then kind of shifted over to, well, what's, you know, is there a space for this to fill a reading need that we have for reading support? We rely heavily on title funding and consolidated federal programs money to support our positions for teachers, who help students who are struggling in those things, and those monies are not growing. They're shrinking continually. And there is a need for that to go local, whether that goes local, you know, tonight, or whether that goes local next year. Given the kind of crunch we were in this year around the budget and the deficit, that the choice around, like, what do we do with that .8? It became, this is, you know, that was the question, and that's how it kind of boiled down, and that was what we had a discussion on. If we have this .8, and we have a need to support our struggling readers, which is, you know, a larger chunk than we'd like, though we're not any worse than any other school in the state, I want to keep saying this, some people are misinterpreting my words and saying that we're doing horrible at teaching reading. We're average, we're good, we're fine, we're beating the state average sometimes, and we're right below us sometimes, we're right there. But that doesn't mean, for me anyways, ethically, I don't rest on that and say that that's close enough. Forty percent not being able to read on grade level is good enough for me, you know. So, again, given that choice, if you put it in black and white, that's what I was advocating for, along those lines. Knowing that we do have a really creative staff and a really talented staff who can be versatile and support the arts in a different way, even if that doesn't look as traditional as it has to art classes of 45 minutes a week, which is what we've been doing a long time. I don't know if I answered your question to kind of catch up.
So then to finish, David, so the board approved the roster, but with the .8 position as an elementary position and not an art position. That was the board's action.
And there was some thought about having an increased amount of art in the library with a makerspace in the library activities, Studio Y, and that maybe that would help, you know, help with the deficit in art that would result from losing a .8 art position. That was how the thinking went. I've got to say that some of us have had second thoughts, but that was how the thinking went. So thank you for asking.
Very enough. So then, I'm to assume that no decision has been made, for starters?
Well, a decision was made last meeting, which was just two weeks ago. But we have just, we've just opened it up again, so that we have to remake a decision at this point.
Are you able to rescind that decision?
We just did, we just did.
Okay, that's fine. Well, I appreciate that, that you explained it with the council board.
I have a minute, please, to make a comment. If I could speak to a larger picture, having to do with the budget overall for the school, our January 2nd meeting is when the board approved the budget that was taken to town meeting. And in the discussion there, we, you know, we were working as a committee of the whole for months to propose the budget. And part of what we learned in that process is that we would have some increased costs around 7th and 8th grade tuition. That was a major part of the larger increase in the budget we took to town meeting. Looking at the minutes from January 2nd, the meeting during which we approved the minutes, I remember Elise and I, in particular during this meeting, approving the budget was some concern about, all of us had a concern about the increase. But this is a quote attributed to me, "I offered a friendly amendment to include the words 'without compromising the art or the Studio Y program.'" This was January 2nd. We went into town meeting, and we did not know that this would be a topic on March 20th. And we also didn't know that the 7th and 8th grade tuition costs are projected to potentially cause us a deficit this year. That was news to us on March 20th. So think about the board sitting here and hearing from the principal and the superintendent and the business manager that we were looking at not just increased costs for next year that was approved by the town, but some serious issues for the current budget that we're in. In that conversation is when Doug said what he said tonight, that we're looking at a potential decrease in federal funds to help us with reading. So that was a factor. It was discussed that possibly the art, the librarian could take on some additional art in the makerspace. In the minutes from March 20th, it's said clearly, again, attributed to me, which I said, that Studio Y really isn't an art program, it's an integrated arts program. There are all kinds of things, including other curricular benefits that come from that. So all of this is to say, we had, it was a pretty startling discussion around the budget at this meeting that was our reorganization meeting, re-electing the chair, re-electing, you know, all the people who serve on committees and chair them. And then we got to the teacher roster. And it was difficult, is all I'm saying. And I think I personally was a little shell-shocked by the idea of the budget deficit, I know I was. And that affected my thinking in part during that discussion that night. That's just additional.
Thank you, Cheryl. Yeah. Any other thoughts from...
Yes, I don't want to oversimplify, but we don't have much time. And I think that Rick is right in saying that we all are here because we appreciate the arts. And I think there's a bigger matter at hand. I think that because there are so many people here, and we are such a strong community, there are any number of possibilities that we could come up with that might satisfy that reading requirement, or help our kids read better. Any number that I can think of off the bat, from volunteerism to more active participation by parents, being at home, whatnot. I think that our kids will all read eventually, we'll have to read some of them later. But the question here for me is, and I may be mistaken, so at least correct me, but as I understand it, the 7th and 8th grade projections, the cost of that was miscalculated dramatically, and that it's kind of created deficit in lines of about $300,000?
The numbers this year, or the numbers next year of 7th and 8th graders are dramatically more than the numbers that we knew about for this year, back when we did the budget for each year. So, so there's a, and then also the needs of those students are also bigger, and in the case of a town with school choice, the special egg costs for 7th and 8th graders is covered by the town, not by the, not together with all four towns in the SU, unlike all the other grades. So we've got, we've got several hundred thousand dollars of unanticipated costs.
Is it safe to say that without that hardship, we wouldn't even be considering this? Moving the arts in the school, is that a safe bet? I mean, if we had enough money, we'd be eliminating the art department?
No.
I mean, to me, when I walked into this school this year, and I saw that the art department was sharing a room with the music department, right away, that's so volume to me. Right there, just that one statement. Why is art department and music department sharing space? Why don't they have their own space as they have in the past? You know, we're consolidating because, you know, we're trying to save money, but to the point where we're sacrificing, sacrificing some of the most essential parts of our children's education. I think, for me, the music and art are equally important. I think there's more chance that they're going to be learning how to read and write than they are going to be to express themselves. Anyway, Luna, do you want to share what you had to say?
Okay.
I asked Luna to say something on the way down from Rattleboro, and I've made a couple suggestions, and she ignored it. I also have spoken to Nancy. I was an art history major, and she is, I was very impressed by her and her methods of teaching the children. She talked about, you know, imitating the styles of, you know, Pissaro, Paul Klee, Gustav Plin. And this is not something that you find in an everyday art teacher in an elementary, public elementary school. Go ahead. Do it right here. Nice and loud.
Okay.
Sorry.
Luna, go ahead.
Ms. Pizzano is amazing because the art she teaches is beyond anything I have ever imagined. It brings tears to my heart. Please keep Ms. Pizzano and her loving art, please.
Thank you, Luna.
Thank you.
Pass that on. Any other thoughts? Dina?
So I'm Dina Wayson Smith, and I'm a teacher here at Westminster, but I'm also here in my role as WNEA president. And I know you had said we didn't want to read all sorts of letters, but I did want to briefly read the letter that was written on behalf of the teachers here, because there are a lot of teachers here. So we sent this to the Westminster School Board. On behalf of the Westminster teachers, we are writing to express our concerns about your decision on March 20th to eliminate a 10th art position. While we know staffing decisions are yours to make, we would have welcomed the chance to offer our input on the importance of art instruction. We are disappointed that the decision was made and then communicated to us on March 23rd. Our understanding about this recommendation is that our students will no longer receive direct art instruction. Numerous studies show correlation between art education and improved academic achievement. Westminster has a long tradition of valuing art education, and we believe that we must provide children with a well-grounded education. Specific art instruction is a necessary component of each child's experience here in Westminster. If children miss this instruction during their elementary education, it will significantly impact them not only now, but in the future. We understand that the decision to remove art instruction was not made lightly. We are asking you to reconsider this decision and look at a variety of options with input from our professional staff. We are open to all possibilities that improve art education as part of our students' elementary experience. And that's signed by myself and Kelly Green, WNEA co-presidents, on behalf of the Westminster teachers.
Thank you, Dina. Yes?
Hi, I'm Katie Durbin, I have a child in the building. I think that one of the things that bothers me the most is how lightly of a decision this was for all of you. Arts for Westminster has been one of the things that has defined us, I think, from some of the other communities around us. And I know all of you know that. And so, obviously, administration, principal, Chris, talk about, you know, what PMB done. And I can appreciate looking at things, but really in all reality, it's your responsibility is the board to say, "Ahem, this isn't happening." I know that they work hard to try to make numbers work, and that's what they're there to do, but your job is to represent us. And I guess I'm just feeling a little disappointed that we all have to come out. And without Andrea posting it, I wouldn't be here. I don't know how you got that information, but I'm sitting here thinking about, if we were all here tonight, what would happen? Would we really get in a position where there was no direct art in this building? That's important, and that's important to all of us, and I think you guys know that. So I'm asking you, I'm pretty confident you're going to make the right decision at this point, but when things like this come up, you've got to take it more seriously. You can't just make a decision that's going to impact this building, this community, and most importantly, our kids. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Katie, and thank you, Andrea, for reading the minutes of the meeting. It takes an aware and engaged community to do that, community people. Yeah.
I'm speaking as a lame duck staffer. I will not be offered contract, and it's not because I've learned anything terrible, except that I have reached my 31 years, and I will not be coming back. So for 31 years, I've been librarian here, and we have had, from the pad of Westminster, amazing support. We had a full-time librarian for all that time. And I hope that you feel that I have used my time as creatively and flexibly as possible. So one of the things that I think is very important for everybody to realize is that if you're saying part of why missing a .8 art position isn't so bad is because we have such creative librarians, what you're saying is that you're not going to have a full-time art position. What you're saying in essence is that, "Again, you would keep her .3 position as librarian, and my .2 position as a librarian would then be taken as an art teacher." In other words, the decision effectively reduces both the art and the library. So that's point number one. Point number two is that when you go to the website of the Westminster School and also the WNESU, and you look at those SBAQ numbers, in the school report card, we are at the state average, as Doug said. We are at the state average. And when you look at us compared to other schools in the district, we are at the average, averagely, or sometimes even better. And in fact, there were two years that we went from below average to either average or above average. So what that information tells me is that the way that we are teaching, reading, is successful. And the primary, we have, we have help from the federal funds, but the primary art teachers for all of your children are the classroom teachers. And based on the improvements over time, I would say that those classroom teachers are doing an excellent job teaching art. And that if you, in fact, would like to...
Teach means read.
Teach, read.
Yeah.
They are not doing art.
Right.
And so, if you want to redouble those efforts, a really excellent way to do that would be to perhaps have more professional development for those teachers, put some meeting time into revamping, upgrading, changing, if we need to, or putting more meeting time into a tighter schedule. So I would like to suggest those methods, which don't cost as much as they could be.
Thank you, Liz. Any other... Andrea?
Andrea Carlson, parent of a 5th grader. I know I've communicated with all of you, I have a little bit more I would like to add. I'm opposed to cutting the art program and would like it returned to the budget for next year. At the town meeting on March 3rd, we received the 2018 Westminster School Report Card. In it, goal number three is to effectively engage parents and families in the Westminster Community Schools, and will create two-way streams of feedback and information sharing on students and program. It appears that this goal was blatantly ignored when making the decision to cut the art program at the Westminster Center School. The art program was cut due to a concern about low reading scores, yet I have read the school board minutes for the entire year, and there is no mention of a concern with reading. In fact, the SBAQ scores handed out in the school report show that our 3rd through 6th graders have the same or higher scores as their Vermont peers. What I did find in the January school board minutes is a unanimous decision when voting on the budget to not cut Studio Y or the art program. Although Studio Y and the makerspace in the library are fantastic, they do not constitute a formal art program that we know has proven to improve student performance. I'm so pleased that there is a goal to create two-way streams of feedback and information sharing on students and programming with parents and families. Clearly it is needed. I recall a few years ago, when there was some concern about lack of transparency and sneaky decisions being made on the school board, and many of you were outraged. In fact, it may have even driven you to join the board. How ironic that you have clearly acted in the same way, making decisions without being transparent. All of this being said, I have some questions, I will abstain from those. I just want to add that I strongly oppose the elimination or reduction of any of the essential arts programs, PE, library, art, and music, and propose that you either wait and see if an hour a day of reading support during inkling raises the reading scores or find the money elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Great.
Mary Lou Smith, I just had a question. I think I heard that the increased cost for 7th and 8th grade tuition was miscalculated. Did I hear that?
I think Peter mentioned that, and essentially, I, not this year when we made the budget, but now a year and a half ago when we were working on the budget for this year, the number of 7th and 8th graders that were in the system and that we knew about was somewhere in the 40s, if I remember correctly, 45 or something like that. Over the course of the next few months, when we were making our, when, after that budget was passed at town meeting a year plus ago, and the numbers of students, move-ins into the town, and it doesn't necessarily mean people from far away, in some cases it was kids from Bell's Falls... it was kids from Bell's Falls moving to Westminster, or whatever, meant that the number of seventh and eighth graders rose quite significantly, so that at this point, there's about 60 seventh and eighth graders, a big increase from what was budgeted a year plus ago, what was voted in the budget a year plus ago. So, so that's a noticeable, over $15,000 a kid, plus extra special ed costs, that is a significant increase in the budget. We see it in the budget we just voted on at town meeting. We will also see it to some degree at the end of this year, because these kids have been moving in during the course of this year, and so there's a cost this year that were not budgeted that will be incurred, and we will find that there'll be a deficit. We don't know exactly what it will be, but there'll be a deficit at the end, at June 30th, which is the end of this fiscal year.
Just trying to understand the timeline. So when did you realize that this had happened?
When we were making the budget this year, that is, in the fall, we were looking at what the cost would be and realized that already at that point, and projected even more by the end of the year, there was going to be a large, large number of 15 extra kids or thereabouts. When we were making the budget this year. And that's a sort of a fall activity.
Thank you.
Yes, Celia.
Celia, please. I have a different point, but I just wanted to ask one fall session about that. I'm just wondering if you knew back in the fall, why wasn't that, when I voted on the budget, I didn't know about that shortfall. It seemed like there was a budget presented that didn't, you know, indicate that there wouldn't be enough money to cover an art program and whatever else would require. So that's my first question. But I also want to just, I'll let you get to that, I just want to commend you, though, particularly probably Doug, for acknowledging that the skills that Mandy and Janelle have as incredibly talented and creative people that can bring a lot of fabulous art exposure to our children. And not everyone can see that in an art teacher, you know, in a teacher, and I think that you're right on the ball with that. However, I'm feeling a real devaluation of the arts in other ways, and just as Liz said, I would not want any of my child's art time be taken out of very valuable library And I think as well as providing a very talented art teacher, you know, good art teacher for our children, providing the space and time in curriculum, so I also think it's really important for the kids to have a room devoted to each of the arts programs and time in their schedules for each of them. I'd like you all to take that into account when you're figuring out how to propose handling or when you re, try to rework your rescinded efforts, that it's not just a matter of hiring for that, it's also a matter of allowing classroom teachers the classes, time, and space. I've talked to teachers over the years, and they've suggested programs or whatever, and they've told me, "There's no time in our curriculum to expose to children this program or that creative idea." And I think it's really important to make time, at least what we have, if not more, for our children to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you could get back to that question, Dawn.
Yeah, perhaps I will. At town meeting, when we vote on a budget, it's the budget that the school board has been working on for the previous four months or so. And it's a budget that is for the following school year, so it really, you know, some of it covers the summer school program the following summer, but more, it begins in earnest that next fall. So we voted in March, a year plus ago, on a budget that began, was to begin in the school year half a year later. At that point in March, we saw 45 seventh and eighth graders. That's what the administration and what they, looking around, knowing the kids who were not only in the classes here, but were in the classes at Hilltop or the classes at, you know, wherever, that's what we saw, and so that's what was budgeted for. As the, as time went on, more and more kids either moved in or became known, and so that by this March, we know, in fact, there already are about 60 kids, seventh and eighth graders, and we foresee approximately that number this coming September. Now, who knows, maybe there'll be 75, but we, but that's what we see. So that's what we make the budget for. Budget for the previous year was obviously ended out being too low. Budget this year hopefully is realistic. Fingers crossed. So when you voted on the budget this year, if, looking at the documents that were presented and also, I hope, our comments, you would have known that it was up over $300,000 from the previous year, resulting in tax increases and so on and so forth.
But I think what's hard, getting back to transparency, so on the third, we all talked about, yes, we're, as a town, we support education, great, we will support a budget that's up 11 percent, that's great. And then, you know, two weeks later, you're totally changing what was presented, and I think that's what's confusing. You know, how in a really short period of time, there was this, "Oh, wait, you know, we gotta change something," and then it wasn't discussed, you know, and I think that's what's really hard to swallow right now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we have the, we obviously didn't change the overall budget figure.
Right.
We can't do that. But we did, perhaps hastily, change the allocation of numbers within that budget when we were dealing with the teacher run. I want to sort of move on fairly quickly, but Mary Lou, you have your hand up.
I just wanted to make one comment, and that was that, I'm putting on my teacher hat. Teachers today are so engrossed in the rigid standards that they have to meet in order for kids to be successful. That art is one way for kids to actually be creative, which seems to have been taken away from a lot of the classroom time because of the rigid structures that the teachers are forced to comply with. And I also happen to look up the Vermont State Standards, Quality School Standards, and the National Standards for Art, and there is no way that with the teachers trying to get done their academic stuff, that they're going to be able to meet the performance standards under the National Art Standards. So I think that, I think we need, we've got to find a way to keep the art program as it was. It's that important.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Elaine, and hopefully we'll...
I will avoid restating much of what other people have spoken about a little too, and just say one thing about the process that got us to the March 20th board meeting, and that we have a very talented and professional staff in Westminster, and the fact that this big of a decision made all the way to the board meeting without going through leadership or weekly staff meeting or monthly staff meeting, and raised as an issue to say, "We have a shortfall, we have some decisions to be made." What's your professional opinion based on how you know this community, and what recommendations could you make to get us out of this budget shortfall? So I just want to acknowledge that those steps were missed.
Yeah. I want to say that this board, at this point, or shortly, has a fairly difficult decision-making process to go through about how to satisfy the needs of the school and the community without exceeding the budget that was voted for at town meeting. So I want to make sure that we have time to do that. And Melissa, you have one comment, I think, but...
Yeah, I have a comment, okay. My name is Michelle Banning.
Michelle, excuse me.
What I'm hearing is having the art position has nothing to do with the budget, right? Is that what I'm understanding, is that you're wanting an art position, and you're just going to take the art position and get a reading position? It has nothing to do with the budget part, you're using the same money to do something different. So it doesn't matter what the budget does, the budget's gonna do its thing, you guys are gonna figure that out. Are you saying you want to add another teaching position for, if we keep our position, and add a reading teacher, or you're just, I guess that's my point, is it has nothing to do with the budget, it's just the allocation.
Yeah.
So it has nothing to do with the budget, I mean, it does, it doesn't...
Okay, any, thank you, Michelle. Any other comments that haven't been already addressed, Annie? David, you began, you can end.
Just let's say a personal comment. First of all, I'd like to ask, are you guys still putting in the paper that you, when your meetings are going to take place? Because I have a hard time looking at it, and I'm not always online. So that was one of my questions, if you guys are still doing it.
Yes.
And secondly...
In the brattleboro reform.
Excuse me?
In the brattleboro reform.
And secondly, what exactly will the reading teacher, what will they be doing? Sitting there reading with the kids or grading them, or, I mean, what exactly will it intend?
Yes, they'd certainly be doing some reading, and, you know, I think, I just want to be clear that when we were making, when all this happened, which happened in a short frame of time, we didn't, I didn't sketch out the duties per se of that reading teacher, but, you know, if you're asking for some of the types of things that that reading position can or would be available to do, we would, we currently are using a model called Level Literacy Intervention, which is based off of a reading recovery model, which involves reading and reading text at students' individual levels. We also do a mixture of other things, depending on what those individual students or groups of students need. So just like the art position, when this decision was made, when we were sitting there at the table last week, it wasn't like, "Okay, Doug, I want to know the schedule for how we're gonna support the art," because the debate wasn't really like, "Should we kill art or not?" It was, "Okay, if we're gonna duct tape one thing or the other, which one are we gonna duct tape?" And anyways, that's where I was leaning, was duct taping on the art. And so, no, I don't, I don't have like, this is exactly what that person would be doing.
Well, I ask that only because, being recently retired, I'm a strong advocate for public education, okay? I think I turned out well. I think I'm well-versed, and I would, in a heartbeat, if it's for someone to come and sit with them, to allow them to read, to give them time, I'd be the first in my mind to step in. When I went to California recently, I went to a funeral, so it made me reflect a lot, to give back to the community. And so I went to the library where they had Spanish, English classes to, trying to say for the non-speaking people. And so I stepped into that, only if someone gave back as much as I could. And it's a rewarding thing to do, to give back to the community. I started teaching my kids to give back to the community, because this is what they grew up, a lot of these educators know my kids, and they speak highly of them, and I speak highly of this school itself. So if it's someone to sit down, to give time to the kids, I would be willing to do that, no pay, and, you know, because, yeah, some of them need to... We had a bookmobile that used to, they used to pull into our house before they stopped them. So I started teaching my kids to go in there and start reading. So if that's what you need from someone in the community, I would be willing to do it. The bus would just have to pick me up in the morning. But in all seriousness, I would be willing to do that. But without pay, I mean, it's being point eight, point whatever, just kind of off.
Thank you. Thank you, David, that's generous. Elaine?
I have a question about the LLI model that Doug has described in front of the meeting, the reading specialist. Is that in addition to the reading instruction in the classroom, or is that a pull-up? Because I know last year's model, kids were being taken from their reading time in their classroom to be with the LLI. For a teacher who integrates their reading to the thematic parts of the classroom, I really saw it, and teachers saw it, some teachers saw it as a disadvantage, that the kids are taken from the classroom environment to go read books that weren't necessarily tied into what the rest of the classroom or the interdisciplinary nature of their stuff was. I just have a concern about not, about removing kids from these highly qualified teachers who can teach reading quite well, and taking them away from that for a different reading specialist.
Right, they still receive their primary reading instruction, and then this is an additional reading instruction.
Okay, I think I'm gonna break away from the public comments at this point and allow us to discuss this as a board, and I, in doing so, I want to say how grateful I am that all of you have taken this night to come out and share your concerns and, you know, put in as much as you do, you are tonight and do throughout the year into this school. Thank you. Okay, I think maybe we should start by asking Doug, perhaps, what alternatives you might have thought of, or what your thoughts are at this stage.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we, depending on what question we're trying to answer or what we're trying to do, there's, without increasing the budget at all...
Without what, Doug?
Sorry. Without increasing the budget at all, you know, there's a couple of options, obviously. So like, one option was, you know, rescind, you can go with the point eight art, it is what it is, we do what we can do. The other option was do the point eight reading, you know, go back to what we decided last week, and then we do the best we can do with art, you know, that option. And then, of course, there's the Habsies model, and if you did a Habsies model, like a point four art and a point four reading, well, it's a little bit of a compromise on both, which often isn't great, but a compromise on both, that with a point four, point five in that ballpark on reading, you could have one art session, 45 minutes a week, built in, so that's, right now, kids have an hour and a half of art a week. Going the other way, you could have one 45 minutes. If you, if I was advocating for that model, it would be the point four reading. In theory, you could combine both what you have left from the CFP grants and create a person or a full-time person, which, you know, could be, you know, again, it's better than what we have now, which is a part-time person. So anyways, yeah, and then, you know, that, within the budget, those are, those are the options that I see available. And then what that sugars down to as far as, you know, how, what other options we might have, there are, if you look at the calendar and we're thinking about Studio Y and the amount of Studio Y time that we've had currently, if we stayed status quo going into next year, we could probably work up a schedule that would allow Janelle access to be able to teach the kids once a week and still do Studio Y with the same number of experiences. She currently is doing more than just the experiences now, she's doing guidance classes and art class, or acting classes with kids on the days when she's not out of Studio Y. So again, nothing comes without losing something. That would be another thing that could happen. I wouldn't recommend doing both, because that would be weird, having part-time Janelle and part-time. Am I making sense? Am I speaking clearly?
Questions for Doug? Chris, how, can you let us know what's happening in the other schools in the ESU in terms of art instruction?
Athens Grafton has pretty well documented the least art of any school in the district. That kind of came out during the study for the consolidation alternative structure. We're trying to, I think we've, this year's budget, we now have a two-day-a-week art position in Athens Grafton. position in Athens Grafton. It's a smaller school. So, that is the biggest disparity. Colleen, you're doing, what, two, four?
Two days a week.
Two days a week. And you're doing forty-minute periods, is that?
Yes.
At sex and... So you, forty minutes is more of an average?
Twice a week.
Twice a week, it is kind of the average. So, is that, you know, it's a little, the middle school, you get into a set schedule and their, you know, set block. So it's a tiny bit more.
The middle school and elementary side, if you're talking about.
Right. So, yeah, that's...
Thoughts?
Well, I mean, just at least last week, and I don't remember what that meeting was, I was under the impression there was, there wasn't, we weren't cutting art out. We were cutting the point eight position out, in that there would still be some level of art classes, and at least to refer to Andrea's comment, and I don't know if your numbers are totally right, but if Andrea's daughter's in a Studio Y, eight days a year, if that's the number you used, I think, and that's true for every grade, if that's the same, that's forty-eight days a year. I don't know if other grades go more or less to Studio Y. But if that's the numbers, then we're talking forty-eight days of, I guess, Janelle's time being there, which is less than a third of the year. And I know there's planning time and all that, but I was under the impression last week, we weren't just saying, well, we have Studio Y and then, you know, and I know Janelle does more of that, but if that was fifty days, the other hundred and thirty days, I thought some of that would be where Janelle could be teaching some art classes here, was my impression. It wasn't, let's have no more art classes ever. And then we were also, you know, saying that Makerspace is also in addition to the curriculum, whether we call it art or not, is adding in there. And at least, you know, I just will say publicly, that we have added to schools things we do. Computer technology, Studio Y, you know, Makerspaces, we continually add to schools, and we don't add any time. And we add staffing. And at some point, those two things are going to conflict, that you can't keep adding staff and programs and have the school day and year be the same length. And so, I think we're kind of bumping up into that to a degree. And, you know, I don't know, you know, what choices then get made, but we did, we have added a lot of things. And so I don't know what we're prioritizing, but I didn't think we were cutting art, maybe I'm, you know, I think people have implied here that we're getting rid of art entirely and our classes, you know, and traditional art classes. But I thought there was going to be some creative way that we were going to kind of trust the administration and teachers to figure out, to do traditional art as well as the other kind of arts. And maybe that never got to there, maybe I misunderstood.
Well, right, I mean, like, the timeframe with which all this happened, like, was quick. And so, you know, it wasn't, I know that we could do it. I just believe that we could do it. But it, yes, that's part of it. I just want to clarify that it would be more than forty-eight days, because the grades split, so like, individual teachers have two days. So I think it's more like ninety, or, you know, ninety-six or something to a hundred days. That would be outside. But, but again, figuring that out, like, if three through six did their two-day trips and went four times, which would be your eight days that we talked about in case of two, did their one-day trips, you'd still get three days and still have three days a week available. Because we started pretty late this year, because we were getting things up and running, like painting and something like that. We didn't really get rolling full steam until November. So, anyways, if you balance that out over the year and just kept that status quo for a year without increasing the amount of trips or that sort of thing. But, yeah, but it would still be a reduction overall from the hour and a half students get, they would only get forty-five minutes of that traditional class, which was sort of the compromise, knowing in theory that we were balancing that off with other opportunities.
Doug, how practical and realistic is it, and helpful might it be for community members to help support reading in school?
There are certain things that are helpful, you know, but like, when we're talking about re-instruction, they, we need highly trained people who can understand, like, misconceptions and what kids are not understanding about the reading process. You know, every student is unique, and though many kids follow a pretty familiar pattern in reading, and a lot of kids can learn to read honestly with, like, by accident, not all of them can. And it's those students who can't that are really tricky puzzles to figure out, and you can't accidentally teach those students.
People do spend their entire careers studying how to teach reading to young children. So, yes, community involvement's great, having people come in is great, it's not a substitute for a highly trained teacher.
Right.
Working with groups of students, especially if those kids are having a hard time.
Is there space in the school right now for any extra community volunteers?
I don't know about space as far as, like, within our hearts, or like, within our building.
Physical space or time?
Right, I mean, like, we, we have groups of kids everywhere when we're, when we're doing our inkling time and kids are, we're trying to get drilled down to what individual students need or small groups of students need. So, we find spaces and we use nooks and crannies and the things that, that we can do. But, and I do think that there's space for us to have volunteers come in, you know, organizing that and making it so that it's a help and not an extra thing. But, you know, a lot of schools do that sort of reading buddy program, just, you know, for reluctant readers, gives them a chance to practice and have somebody there to guide them. But it's, I don't think, that's not going to be the game changer, but it can help, you know, and, and, so I think there's room for that somehow.
I'm sure I could ask a question, but I have a couple, actually. How many reading specialists do you have on staff now? And what percentage of students are using those reading specialists? And how much time are they spending on reading and reading?
Sure. So I would like to clarify, when we say reading specialist, that is like, that comes with a certain expectation. So we do have a certified teacher teaching reading for three days a week. That is the CFP consolidated title person that we have, her name is Abigail Jenkins. And she's, she's good. She's, you know, she's a new teacher and so...
She's a full-time year?
No, no, she's full year, but she only comes in three days a week. And those interventions usually run half an hour to forty-five minutes, depending on the kids or the groups. So, and we do have a, we have a para who's also, you know, that, you know, trained and whatnot, pulling groups five days a week for students.
And that percentage of cases are utilizing that?
What?
Or...
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know if I can give you a percentage off the top of my head. Sorry.
If it were with the, you know, the active more?
No, it wouldn't be half the kids, but I can't, I literally have to count and divide and stuff like that. I don't have the percentage.
Okay. All right. Is there any further thoughts or motion that you might have?
I'm certainly inclined to put a motion forward, there's a hand up here.
Sure.
I just have a quick comment. Melanilla Ross, I have a sixth grader here. It seems to me that before we added in the Studio Y, things seemed to be okay. I mean, we need to revisit Studio Y. I know my daughter goes to Studio Y, and of course she loves it, but if it's a matter of her learning more with reading, then I would say that Studio Y needs to be revisited and bring back in traditional art and more reading time.
So, this is the reading, the roster that you passed?
This is the one that was initially presented, is that a different one?
Well, this one, because you made a change to it. Which I kind of discussed, we didn't... Sorry, I don't, I mean, I have a few copies that you... So, so this still shows the library media specialist point four to be hired. This Malander, Lisa Malander has moved up into the point eight elementary because she needed to be offered a contract. She's still, has a reduction in force of point two. And there's still the non-renewal, but that's neither here nor there.
So, this is what we approved last...
This is what you approved, yeah.
And essentially, does that make, is that clear to everyone? This is what we approved on the twentieth, or essentially the end result.
When you switched the point eight from art to elementary, you see that?
Yes.
You did. Then you owed a contract to a teacher.
We didn't discuss that, and we didn't go into executive session with the detail of the name there.
There's no choice.
There is no choice about it, and I...
Oh, okay.
...at the time.
Okay.
There's no choice.
Yeah. She is entitled to a contract.
Great.
So, the difference is, she's actually entitled to a one-point-o contract, and with what you approved, you only had a point eight. Which is why I said, now you have Lisa Malander in point eight elementary and point two But anyway, you've rescinded this, so this is just where you stand.
Where we... One alter. So just logistics-wise, if one were to look at a point four, a point four, a point five, and point three, whatever, that was reading and, and art, two separate things, does Lisa Malander have to be really good at both? Or does she become only...
She doesn't have a license for art.
I know, so would she only be eligible for, would she be then automatically become the point four?
She would be, if you did that, the point four and point four...
Yeah.
She would be issued a point four elementary...
Okay.
...contract, and the point four art would be...
Yeah, okay. Whether she took it up. Yeah, exactly. Just clarifying.
She would be offered.
I, I think it's important that we acknowledge that there's, there's, there has been a noticeable reduction in federal funds, Title I, and that that is impacting the amount of resources that are available for, for reading help here. I think it is also important to acknowledge how important art is to the community and to the kids, those of us who have kids in the, in the school and know it. And also to acknowledge that every year is an experiment. And it's, we don't get it right every year. And I think I'd be inclined to reinstate the point eight art position, cut out the reading, and try to work on ways to meet at least some of the reading, reading needs with community, with maybe trying to dig up some other grants, something like that. But, that, I think that's my suggestion right now.
I agree. I mean, I think that, I know, art to me, and obviously to everyone else, is very important. And not to dismiss your point of like, that, that's not the point, but I think that it's that important that we should go this year with reinstating the art and finding innovative ways to help with the reading.
I'm, I'm certainly very much in that place. And I want to say again about the transparency issue. I really do feel like this came to us suddenly. We knew about the impact for the budget that we had, that we took to town meeting. But, but the additional news about the impact this year was also stressful in the context of that, of that meeting. So, it's not something that we knew ahead of time. We're dealing with this kind of, kind of real time here now. I also think that around our test scores and the example of reading, we should be looking at all of them. I know that we are as good or better in more than half of the areas with many of the standardized tests, but I feel like all, I mean, this is to the concept of proficiency, Doug, that you and I have talked about as well. So, reading is one example. The kids need to be doing well in all the basic areas. So I'd like to ask the board with our leadership here, to look at all of that, and, and not piecemeal, but to really look at student achievement and try to get even the broader picture of all of it. But personally, for this discussion tonight, I'm in favor of reinstating the point eight art position, keeping the budget as it is, and working to figure out how we're serving all the kids in all of the skill areas.
Question, just if you were to rewind the tape before this crunch came along, and you just wanted to have a discussion, the point eight art position never came into the discussion, and you were just spitballing as to how can we augment, what reading services we need, we have, how can we, what sort of dollar amount would the additional position that you were going to shift represent for a salary for a person as hard or full-time as you think would be ideal? I'm just thinking that it's clear that there's plenty of community support for the art program, that's not a question. If we had to raise X amount of money, either through grants or through other creative ways for this school year, and we could figure out ways to make it ongoing in the future, but dealing with this fiscal year, what's, what's the dollar amount that is at stake? I'm not familiar with these numbers.
So, these, I mean, it depends on who you would hire for that sort of position. You know, ideally, we'd be looking at a literacy coach, so not just someone who's coming in and teaching, like, individual students, but also working with teachers about how they're doing. That's like, the ideal. You want someone with experience and knowledge and the ability to, to kind of raise the bar of everybody. That's what is kind of a game changer. That being said, you would hire a person and, you know, starting like with a master's is somewhere around like sixty-five thousand with benefits and that sort of a thing. And obviously, that goes up from there, depending on their experience and level of education and that.
Very quickly, as I'm sitting here, I have all these teachers in front of me, and none of them have really gotten up to speak, which, there's reasons for that, I'm sure. But I think that you're really short-sighted, Doug, if you're not using them as your resource to try to work on figuring out a way to integrate some more reading into their classroom time. And I just think the world of all of these folks, because they've been with my children for years, but I'm really, really challenging to some of them and to look for the option to integrate that reading piece that's needed, because I'm pretty confident they could come up with some ideas to make it happen. And I appreciate the board's willingness to put that point eight position back in for art, because I think that's really why we're all here, is to make sure that happens. I challenge you, Doug, because they're wonderful resources. Use them and I'm sure they'll come up with some ideas.
Okay, I guess I'll make that motion to approve a new revised teacher roster with a point eight art position rather than the point eight elementary position that we approved last time, which has now been rescinded.
So can I just interject?
Please.
So if you do that, the way this piece of paper looks is, the Lisa Malander goes down to being a rep. down to being a rep, that's we, just like we first presented, 1.0, and then elementary becomes art and it's Point A and it's a 2B higher.
Is that clear?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
I mean, I would just, again, point out that, I mean, this seems to be the direction it's going, but again, we have too little time, you know, so next, you know, looking at next year's budget, future budgets, I encourage, you know, the administration, certainly working with teachers, rest of the community, to really look ahead at, given the amount of time we have, how are we using it? Because, I mean, we could, we could say, you know, based on this, we could say, we like art so much, let's have a 2.8, 3.8. We keep adding time, but we don't have more time in the day, you know, so what, what come, what are we not doing, or where are we going with, you know, spending on something and then more time goes somewhere else, you know? Studio W is a good example. We were moving kids physically from this building and paying for that and we didn't reduce anything, we just moved them out of there. So, it just, eventually, I mean, looking at the whole mix, I think Cheryl's right, look at all the scores and stuff, but, but it, I mean, I'm totally supportive of the arts, but, you know, we don't have any more time in the day. And so, I encourage you guys to think ahead and, and just in terms of transparency, I mean, I think, I think people are right to say this, you know, should have been talked through at the school level, it would have helped a lot. In terms of this process, I hope people appreciate this is a democratic process. We have open meetings and open notes, so people like Andrea can see the notes and people can then participate. We do well, I think, every couple of years or so, we have one of these that gets tons of people to come out.
It's terrific. Not many, not even, it's great. Try to make the mistake, please.
And, yeah, and we don't, you know, it's not, it's not locked in stone till it's locked in stone, you know, so this is transparent. This wasn't like, we talked about this all somewhere else and came in March 20th and said, "Let's do this," you know, it was like, we had it in real time. My understanding was pass the teacher roster, we did the best we could in the time we had and then we have a process by which people can then be involved and contribute after that and that's the way a democratic, open process works.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. Now, so that's the teacher roster, revised teacher roster approved. There are lots of other exciting things happening in this meeting, so you're welcome to stay, but also welcome to leave if you'd like to. Thank you for coming.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay. Policies. Do we have any policies to go over? No. So, let's go to superintendent's report.
You guys all have some humility, or, you know, all of you, I know that you're all passionate about arts.
Thank you.
Thank you for your reviews.
You're laughing, you're pointing about what teachers can't do.
I agree with you too. I heard everything you said.
I completely agree with you.
Yeah, but I think it was a wise decision to just say status quo for this year, let's look deeper into how we can do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm never a huge fan of what, I'm never a huge fan of lots of people's input, therefore changing, like the logic, it's a logic, so I actually got it.
Yeah.
You know, but it certainly doesn't sound, look better.
I think the process really was-
So, just a couple of things.
It could have been better, that's for sure.
Oh, this is your report?
Yeah.
All right.
Uh, we went to Barrett.
Oh, yeah.
We did.
And it was just to go to the pizza place. They made a heck of a good grilled chicken sandwich. So, and I want Cheryl and I presented, we're an awesome team, I think. I went all the way.
Oh, really?
Me? But I thought it went well. I didn't, you know, I didn't see them picking away at a particular point in our, that they had already identified as being a weakness in our application. In fact, they were pretty well quiet through the whole thing because we talked way past our turn. Besides, I guess that one question they asked was, well, do you, are there other districts that you consider part of your community? And, and we said, "No." I mean, but it's true. I mean, we don't think of Springfield as our sister community or, or, you know, the districts in Brattleboro are part of the Brattleboro Union High School, they're not part of our high school, so. So, anyway, I thought it went well and, but Elise and Cheryl were there, so I'm interested in there.
And it was just Brad and Donna was the gang?
No, Rebecca-
Was there?
She was cleaning out while she talked to us, but she was there.
Oh, good.
Yeah, actually, that was kind of amazing how she like still made it seem like it was her total job even though she was leaving in two hours. She was like, you know, "We're doing this and we're doing this." No, I think it went extremely well. Chris presented the, kind of the basics and the geography and the numbers and then Cheryl kind of spoke to the points of, that we kind of had outlined or just why, why we make a good, why we make a good structure.
Structure.
Yep. And they, they, they listened and like you said, they asked a few questions, but they, they seemed very positive.
For those who may not know, this was our Act Forty-Six proposal, the alternative governance structure proposal and they, they were also, whereas we didn't get any hard questions and there were no surprises really around that, they're still really careful to say that they can't say anything, the recommendations will come out June 6th or whatever the day, June 1st, whatever it is. And, and so, we'll, we'll just see. I think it's our view and the view of others. We had a delegation of eight of us and then the three representatives of the agency-
Eight from Rockingham, Athens, Grafton, and Westminster.
Yeah, that's exactly right. It was all, all towns represented, which was great and, which was wonderful.
Yeah, and I think that was a strength of our application, again, because it's all the four towns and the high schools.
So, so, given that the law says that an alternative governance structure may be submitted and, you know, is a valid choice, if anybody is approved, we ought to be among those who are, if anyone can, you know? And that would be in itself kind of an interesting contest. It's, I mean, because really, we're on very solid ground with respect to that.
It should be said that the whole thing is in flux right now because the Secretary of Education has resigned and there may be a, there will be a new one. And there may be some vision from the governor's office about how all this process should go, which none of us know about at this point.
I think that's doubtful though because the signals the governor has been sending is full speed ahead with the, the Act Forty-Six process.
With-
For better or worse.
Yeah, but that being said, it's, I mean, it's so funny, I mean, it's, you hear depending on who's making the statements from, they're going to impose, the governor's going to impose one mega district for the state or only mergers on everyone in this plan to, you know, you know, "We're not going to do anything until," you know-
The governor has not the power to do that.
I know.
That's ridiculous.
But, but, or that they're going to, or they're going to make all of them be mergers and whoever makes the plan from the agency is going to make everyone be a preferred merger model. It's like, I don't know why, you know-
You can't. And that was also sort of the crux of my presentation was that-
You can't.
We've got a union high school, you can't break it up. We've got choice in grade seven and eight, you can't take it away. You can't close schools, so of all things that it says in that-
Yeah.
So, so there was that. I, I think what we're really need to hope for is an early win, which would be that on June 1st or whatever, that when this, the agency recommends plan, and really Donna Russo Savage is the person behind the plan who was there with us in the meeting. We, it would be great if they say, "My least is good, we'll support the Athens, Grafton, you know, merger study," because they are talking about forming a union school, which I think would be to their advantage. So, there's that. Then we, on to the Secretary of Education, where the rumors are flying and I think they're all just rumors, except for the one about somebody who knows nothing about education could do the job.
That's what the governor said.
That's what the governor said, yes.
Wow.
He walked that back a little today.
Yeah. I think that would be pretty, pretty tough and I think that person would not have a lot of credibility in the field.
There's a fairly damaging headline in the Vermont Digger today saying something like, "Job opening, no education experience necessary."
Step right up. But I also, I don't know, I had lunch with several of folks who are the people that are important policy influencers there at List last week and one of their comment to me was, "You'd have to be insane to do that job." I mean, it's a really tough job.
So, you're not the one at the point?
I, you know, you guys think you're liberal, I'm actually to the left of you. I don't, yeah, so, um-
You just act like a right-wigger with us, Chris.
So, but, yeah, I don't think I'd be as.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
No?
No, probably not.
Any questions for Chris?
Now, why, why hide the liberal thing the whole time with us? Just kidding.
Okay. Doug? You have a-
It's hard to follow.
Really?
I didn't require one because you were out of-
Right. I don't really have anything official other than to report that our next board meeting, we will, we have Edie and Christine and Adam and I sat down and we have all the glorious numbers in beautiful spreadsheet format to show you regarding the capital improvement funds and how we use those, but we didn't bring them tonight, again, in deference to the other discussion we were having.
And not to mention the- There, it's always possible there could be another capital expense before the end of the year.
Exactly. And I think it's a discussion that can be delayed and might want to be delayed until May or June.
Okay. Edie? Do you have anything?
Nothing.
Committees? Community education support, has it met since the 20th?
It has not.
Has not.
And I still have to speak with Cheryl and Doug to see if we have a, a meeting next week, which is usually, the usual time, it's just a little crazy before, um, spring break and, so anyway, I'll, I'll let, we'll, we'll warn that if, if the meeting's being held next Wednesday. Would you have anything from Elise?
All right. And then there was a meeting of the WESU, you know, but what can, what can we-
Yeah. Sorry about that. Well, David Clark is the new chair for, for Westminster. We are, um, maybe just jump in a little bit, we're actually going to inter, we, meaning a search committee, is going to be interviewing some assistant superintendent candidates that we actually just met before we came here. So, Chris Brad was involved in that, so we will, if there is a suitable candidate, we will highly bring out this to the next WESU board.
Anything else?
Well, I, I would, you know, all of the officers were elected and such and I would say it was, it was at the pre-meeting where through discussion, Chris and I were asked if we would represent the SU with our proposal to the Agency of Education. And I want to thank and acknowledge Rick Gordon, who sat there and gave me some notes afterwards that really helped with what I therefore used, because that was Wednesday and we presented on Friday. And so, it was really, yeah, you know, I expanded on it, but it really did work for what you gave me. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
And I, so I therefore knew nothing was going on in the meeting, I was typing. By the way, I would say, just that happened before the meeting though, you know, and during the meeting, that I said there was sincerely part of this, you know, that this group of towns and board members really work well together and are able to have differing viewpoints and come from different perspectives and work really effectively, you know, and I think that was what we were trying to convey to the state and it's real. I mean, you know, there's new board members there and people are quite respectful and appreciative of everyone's service and, you know, Ed was gracious in turning over the reins to David and, you know, so it's, it's a, it's always, this board's a pleasure to serve with and that board as well is appreciated.
I agree. I think when I, you know, thinking about my time, you know, when I first came and it was kind of the, the night of the curmudgeons years ago-
Yeah.
-at the SU board meeting and the discussions have really changed so that they're, they're much more even-handed, less a boys' club, although still, it's happened, but-
It's funny in some ways, I mean, not, you know, it's not that surprising, it's that, that, you know, you become better through adversity, you know? It's like people were able to sit in their separate corners 10 years ago or whatever, you know, and like, "That's our town, that's yours," you know, and through a variety of things that we may not want to have dealt with, people have had to work through, you know? Being honest with each other and being angry at some things and disagreeing and coming out the other side like, "Okay, it's still, that's all right, we can still work together."
Great. Great. Um, let's move on to new business. There, I, I put in the agenda a firearms resolution which, which I was put in because of the actions by the Brattleboro School Board that had a pretty impactful resolution that got some attention. And at this point, I, um, the legislature has taken action, the governor is going to sign a pretty, um, meaningful gun, legislative action on gun control and I'm not sure whether we want to ask any resolution ourselves at this point or not, but-
I have something for you.
Please.
Inspired by you rocking him last night, Matt, and actually spent quite a bit of time wordsmithing the Brattleboro resolution that you had passed on. So, here's what they passed last night, speaking of boards working together and side by side.
Spirit of unity.
And you'll see they preserved some of the nicer, more relevant paragraphs from the Brattleboro resolution and-
Updated.
Updated it. And we added in the, the three bills, because there's really three bills. I think I have the bill numbers right, I was working off a seven days article on one. And we had to do a little research about what the states for gun safety actually is and we did.
Okay, good.
And it does seem like a good thing. I don't know, the governor's actually thought about it.
This is good. Shall we, Tim's, Tim's making a motion to move this, except as from the Rock, the Westminster Town School Board.
To thank our partners from Rockingham for their efforts and adopt what they did.
Makes sense, some discussion, please.
So this isn't considered a first read, we're allowed to just?
No, I don't think it's, I don't think it's that type of business, we can make a resolution and pass it right now.
Not a policy.
It's just a resolution.
Okay.
To have any effect on your business.
Okay.
And in fact, I would almost say because of the speed that things are moving, it's probably a good idea to have something sooner around. My understanding of the big bill is that although it's passed both the houses, you know, there's some differences that have to be resolved in committee and the governor still has to sign it.
Just a friendly amendment to Tim, I would thank both Rattleboro and Rockingham.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and go forward.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, great, thank you.
We split the resolution for Friday, March Monday or something too. That's great, some weird resolutions every time.
Okay.
See, they're really reading this.
Request for unpaid leave.
There's one, it's a, it's important, so I just hope that it's started the evening. Okay, a half-day unpaid, again, she's a relatively new era.
Is this future or not, or has happened?
It's a has happened.
If you support it.
Either we do, yes.
Should I make a motion to approve a half-day unpaid leave for Bethany Corson?
Okay, any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, then, under old business, we took care of A, assigned tuition reserve funds.
So one of the things I asked Edie today is, do we know exactly where, what the final tuition bills are going to be for grade seven and eight?
Right.
She said, yes.
Yeah.
And so, since we do and we know how much is budgeted and all that, that's what Edie's going to talk about, I think you are in a position where you could assign your tuition.
It's something we certainly need to do by June 3rd.
You do, and, well, it's on there right now, so without Edie, there's still figures.
Yeah, this year we had budgeted $645,000 and as I have discussed during budget season, we thought we were going to be about $225,000 over in regular ed tuition. It's actually going to be $243,000 in regular ed tuition. And then special ed excess costs and tuition are going to be $59,000, bringing us to $302,000.
Excess.
So if we use the entire tuition reserve fund, which is $57,843, it brings you down to $244,586 in overage in seven and eight tuition.
Is there a, any funds that come from state federal governments that would offset the special ed?
We've already netted them out.
You've already netted them out, so the $59,000 is what it is?
It's the net, yeah. And so, we know we've got it, or we think we have enough in for next year. And for FY19, we know you've got some big classes coming through in FY20, so we're going to have to make sure that we have extra in FY20, but the seventh and eighth grade tuition is going to continue to be high. But I think if we can estimate extra, which is what we got this year, we probably won't need that reserve fund for at least two years, so.
Seems like a good year to use that reserve fund.
Yeah, very.
Yep. Let's see, someone want to make a motion about that?
So, make a motion to use the reserve fund of 58?
$57,843.45 is the exact amount.
Use the reserve fund of 57, 843 and 45 cents.
Yeah.
To offset the overage of seventh and eighth grade tuition.
Okay, makes sense. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Edie.
Josh, are you doing okay way down there? Can you hear?
Yeah, I got good ears.
Good, good, good.
Then we have the school activities fundraising accounts, which we, we talked about last meeting, heard the, not the policy, but the procedures that have been put in place to try to keep track of those funds, but we're revisiting it so that we all can be clear about fundraising activities that are done through the school account versus fundraising activities that are not and so on. So any further talk or thoughts on this subject?
I just want to confirm that both, there was, it wasn't 100% confirmed whether or not both of the PTO accounts were using the school's tax ID number as the founding paperwork and stuff, and they both are indeed using the.
They, they both are?
Yes.
Wow.
Which is, like in one of those pages in the audit, you'll actually see that they do audit it, and I'm assuming that's one of the reasons why we continuously have those books audited.
Yeah, we have to.
So that then means that, remind us of what that means in terms of the procedures.
Well, there's several options. I mean, you can leave things as they are, I mean, we're, you know, they're both essentially school funds, they're being audited, they're being, is the treasurer managing?
Yeah, that is not then how they were operated beforehand, they were operated by the treasurer's of the independent.
Yeah, so that would be one change, is that really the school secretary should be managing those accounts. Because your, your PTOs do not have a legal standing, really, in terms of the tax exam. So that would be one change. They can remain separate if you want to do that, they really shouldn't be managed, school funds shouldn't be managed by somebody who isn't a school employee, and that's why we said your school secretary should be doing that. Another option number two, I guess, would be to merge both the funds into one, you know, one student activity account, you can always keep the accounting separate, you know, these were the funds from the West, and if the folks from the West want to raise more money, you know, you can earmark it that way. Trish can do the accounting, keep them separate and keep them in one fund, that might be easier.
Yeah, one checkbook.
One checkbook, but keeping track of what's been raised for what. And I guess that would be my recommendation, but I, you know, I don't, I make that not wanting to step on anybody's toes, you know, I, I just, the important thing really is that people are able to continue to fundraise for school programs, that they're working with the school when they're doing that, because they're going to be in conversation with the principal about what they're going to be fundraising for, we know where the funds are, we know who the person is that's handling them, there's no, you know, opportunity for fraud or, you know, some horrible thing, and you occasionally read about it in municipals around for a month, usually it has to do with towns and not school districts, because we have so many checks in that system.
I guess I just want to advocate, I don't know actually who makes the decision or where it all boils down to, but it is, it is a messy thing to have those accounts knowing that I'm responsible for them and then also knowing that I'm not even a signer on one of the accounts, that's a little bit concerning and really, they both, you know, I don't, the only hurt feelings that would happen, I think, would be illogical, you know, like we're not talking that people can't fundraise and/or spend the money out of there, we're just saying we need to centrally locate those things.
Yeah.
And there are things that are dicier or more confusing, that would be good to help keep separate. So for instance, you know, when we are having our PTO meetings and trying to get that off the ground, which I've, you know, been pretty involved with this year, there are still a lot of conversations around this is a, this is a West fundraiser, this is a thing we need to do, so we need to give money to the West community, which now that that's a, now that we are clear that that is a school tax ID number, we cannot make donations to other organizations, it's like illegal. And so that all gets really dicey and it would just be helpful to be clear, being like, okay, we can do a joint thing, but let's keep those things clear, you know, like we get our money, you get your money, but we're not getting the money and I gave you the money, like it doesn't work that way. It would just, it would just clear up a lot of that things, and I think it's more sustainable over time. If people are coming in and out of PTOs and stuff like that, it just, it just makes sense, if we are ultimately responsible for the accounting of that account, then it should be us, you know, it should be one place, one, one spot for us to be able to do that. It also sends a good message that, you know, currently those PTOs are merged, so let's do that, you know, let's stop, so we need to finish the pavilion, we need to finish the pavilion, that's not really a West problem, that's a Westminster problem. So, maybe, so that's what I'm advocating for, that, you know, the clarity and the streamlined of accountability really is that, this is the best way to do that, with, I think, which is much less, like last time I was like, cut his eyes, make a formula 503, again, because this is a thing that gets people in trouble, it happens a lot and happens easily, so if we're going to be, if I'm going to be ultimately responsible for those, which I am, this is, this is what I'm asking of you.
Thank you, and, yeah, thanks.
Any more thoughts or questions about this, Tim? Okay. Review alternative structure actions, I think we just did that, right? Did we need?
Well.
Oh, no, not quite.
Really?
Yeah.
And I'm kind of, because we're here and I can't project, I'm sort of a, a loss, but let me just, it's been, it's kind of late, maybe we want to go back to this, but I can kind of, in a nutshell, do this, because I had the same item last night in Rockingham. So the piece I put on your documents were two things really, I put the things you had agreed to in the Add 46 application and, and also Appendix G, which is the piece about goal setting. Okay, and this is kind of, in part, that's the discussion I want to have with you tonight. So it turns out the actions, and I went through this with Rockingham last night, things are rolling along, we have the food service discussion going, we, some of the, the, also, the Bellespoles Union High School Board, get out your calendars, has scheduled a meeting of all boards for Monday, June, or?
Yeah.
And tell them people are going to too many meetings, finish my sentence. So that will be a meeting of all the boards at the Bellespoles Union High School, it's a Monday night, okay? And we said it there because I wanted to give the boards a chance to have a discussion about goal setting. And I'm not saying we would, I think that we need to schedule that maybe for your next meeting to review your goals and, you know, maybe you want to totally revise, I don't know what you want to do with your goals, they're your goals. But anyway, part of this Appendix G and the alternative structure piece was this kind of a plan which you might follow or might not, but it involved the superintendent having S U goals, which the S U board would look at, that would, I'm planning to have happen at the next S U board meeting. So then you've got those to look at at your local level, set your local goals, and then you go into this larger meeting with all the other boards with both the cohesion of the superintendent's S U goals kind of driving things, but also with your local board goals as part of the discussion and kind of see how they all fit together with the other board's goals and actions. And I think I've kind of captured the gist of the Appendix G, which was a little more wordy. So that's kind of how I see that going forward.
Yeah, and then this June 4 meeting would act as, I think in the alternative governance structure proposal, we had two joint meetings a year.
Right.
Correct.
And this would be.
This would be one.
Ahead of even having it approved, maybe.
Right, right.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's kind of how, I think it would work best if we do that.
Well, why don't I plan on putting that on the agenda for next time, a discussion about this.
And you're not, yeah, your next meeting is going to be in May anyway.
Yeah.
It's, it's early, it's the, it's May 8th, it says.
May 8th, yeah. Okay, that's great.
Why is it then?
Any other thoughts about that?
I don't know. We're just questioning the first Tuesday, I guess.
The second Tuesday, rather than the third?
Well, the first Tuesday would be the.
First.
Okay.
We picked this because of year end or something? Our, our meetings for next year, just to restate again when they normally are, it, we're, they're the third Tuesday.
Yeah, we were shooting for that.
Right.
So, and.
Is there a reason why this is, why, why May 8?
Right.
Do we have a mistake or something?
I think maybe.
I just wrote it on my calendar before, I didn't even say it.
I think it should be May, what, May 15?
Yeah.
Seven days after that.
Yeah, so, one, right.
We don't all totally confuse ourselves.
So it's the?
So, yeah, so that's actually not too far away, hate to say it, well, no, I like saying that. Because it's April 3rd, but, so we could, this is sort of a discussion for later on, if you want to forego that first meeting, have it be your third on the May 15th would be fine, and we could have the goal discussion.
Okay.
If that's all right.
Let's talk about that in a minute, we can talk about next meetings.
Okay.
Okay, teacher contracts, we have to go into executive session, is that right?
Yeah, and we should, maybe we could do that at the very end.
Very end.
At the very end, because I don't think there's an action coming out of that.
Point is.
So we posted the point for library position, and Mandy Walsh, who is your, already your point six librarian, writes, "I am writing to express my interest in becoming the Westminster Center School full-time library media specialist, the 2018-19 school year." And we're.
Plus her point six would make.
She'll be a, right, a full-time person.
So how many, how many librarians, like, did we have 1.6 this, this year? No?
1.0 total.
1.0. And so Mandy's?
She and Liz split.
Okay.
Split with Liz.
Okay.
So you're going to, from 1.0 to 1.0.
Okay.
But with one person.
Okay.
Good then.
Motion to appoint Mandy Walsh as full-time library specialist.
I move that we approve Mandy Walsh for an additional point for library media specialist, making that a full-time position.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let's do director's comments. Do you have any director's comments?
Yeah, thanks to Cheryl and Chris and everyone who went to the AGS thing and took the time up there at Berry and apparently represented us well.
I'd like to thank you two also, and David, for making it in for this meeting.
Got any ice packs?
Ready to get ice packs? Thank you. And Cheryl?
Well, again, a, a thank you to this board and to the community for coming forward this evening, was a very helpful meeting.
We had right, the same that I've heard.
Okay, great. And I also, I just wanted to also give my thanks to Cheryl and to Chris and to the others who went up. I was planning to do it and wasn't able to, so it was, and recognizing that it's not just the driving to Berry and the sitting there at the meeting, but also the preparation involved for the two of you, which it's as much time as all the rest of it, so thank you, thank you much.
Stephen, if I could add, I just said the board and the community, but I want to thank Chris and Doug and really the faculty as well. But this was not an easy meeting and I know we're leaving a lot of responsibility to Doug now after everything that's unfolded, so again, we know you'll do your best and thank you very much.
Okay, next meeting. Does May 15 sound all right to everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll make sure next meeting, May 15. And now, I think, before we adjourn, we need to, I need to have a motion to go into executive session.
A motion to go into executive session to discuss teacher contracts.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Great.